Great, okay. It is Tuesday, September 1st, 2020, 6:00 PM. And this is the regular city council meeting. And we are going to start with the flag of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in
I will turn it over to Lisa Del Piccolo, our city clerk, for roll call.
Barbara Bynum.
Present.
Doug Glasgow.
Present.
Roy Anderson.
Present.
Dave Bowman.
Present.
Dave Frank.
Present.
All city council members are present.
Thank you very much. Are there any changes to the agenda, Mayor Pro Tem Glasgow?
None at all.
Thank you. So the first by no business is item number five, license cephalo awareness day proclamation. And I will turn it over to the city councillor, Dave Frank, who's going to do the honors this evening.
Whereas an estimated one in 100,000 people are born with lisence cephalo, a rare gene-linked brain malformation, causing the brain to have less or no ridges and folds, making it appear smooth. And whereas people living with this condition may also suffer from hypertonia, epilepsy, swallowing disorders, developmental delays, and more. And whereas addressing the complex medical needs early in life is imperative to helping families successfully care for their children, education, awareness, and support for families is desperately needed. And whereas it is appropriate that one day each year should be set apart from the rest and be known as lisence cephalo awareness day. And this day shall be September 8th. And whereas Lisence Cephalo Foundation Incorporated, a nonprofit charitable organization, wants to help support these individuals through continued efforts of empowering families and edging in communities. Now therefore, we, the city council of Montrose, Colorado, do hereby proclaim September 8th, 2020, as Lisence Cephalo Awareness Day in the city of Montrose and urge citizens, patients, caregivers, medical professionals, and all agencies and organizations interested in supporting these families to unite on that day in observance of such exercises. The witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the official seal, the city of Montrose, this first day of September, 2020. Dave Frank, city councillor.
Thank you very much. Next on our agenda is the call for public comment portion of our agenda. And this is for non-agenda items. So do you see anyone in our Zoom waiting room?
I see no one asking to speak, Madam Mayor.
Okay. And I'll ask our city clerk if she received any notice of anyone wanting to speak or reading comments.
I did not.
Okay, thank you very much. And I'll remind the public that although we're in this hybrid model where councillors are in person and our public and our department heads are on Zoom, that there is still an opportunity for public comment on non-agenda items at the beginning of every meeting. And that can be done by contacting the city clerk ahead of time or it can be done by joining the Zoom meeting and raising your hand. Okay, moving on. Agenda item seven. Is the approval of the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the X-18 2020 regular city council meeting.
I'll second it.
Great, and we're back to using our electronic voting system tonight. So let's dust it off and make sure it works. Which is a hotel and restaurant liquor license application. This is council consideration of an application for a new hotel and restaurant liquor license at 647 East Main Street for Bonnie and Clyde's Limited, doing business as Bonnie and Clyde's, for consumption on the licensed premises. I will turn it over to city attorney Stephen Alhorn for an introduction. And we will hold a liquor license hearing following that.
Is Mr. Green in the audience? Okay, if you could bring Mr. Green on.
I'm here.
Okay, Mr. Green, seems appropriate, I'm talking about a place called Bonnie and Clyde's with a mask on. But would you tell us a little bit about your history? And then tell us about Bonnie and Clyde, what you plan to do with it. Let council know, and this is your opportunity to let others know, what you want to accomplish in the restaurant and how liquor is going to fit into that.
Okay, well, I was a contractor for about 15 years. And we moved to Colorado about three years ago and started a restaurant in Yre. And we since closed it down with the COVID thing that happened. This restaurant is going to be more geared toward kind of fine dining. It's going to be a fresh menu. You know, we're not having frozen foods. It's going to be a small menu that changes frequently. So we're hoping it'll be kind of a unique type of restaurant for Montrose.
And could you tell us? When I moved to Montrose, I quickly discovered, everybody knows restaurants by the name of the previous restaurant. I want them to start thinking about Bonnie and Clyde's and not who used to be there. But it's probably going to be the easiest way for you to describe to council where your location is.
I think it was called, the last place was called Gin and Ginger's. What it is, it's an old church building. And it was kind of retrofitted a while back to be a restaurant. And we've come into it and we've remodeled the whole thing and made it really, really a lot higher-end interior and it's going to be a really nice restaurant.
And in some of the background information, it was kind of a love at first sight for you in this place?
Kind of, we saw it a while back. We were looking to do a different type of restaurant when we first saw it. So it didn't kind of fit that. But the Bonnie and Clyde's restaurant, we were kind of planning on doing that a lot farther down the road. But this place just kind of screamed, you know, like we would work. It kind of lends itself, it really lends itself to fine dining, the way we have it set up. You know, it's a really, it's a beautiful building. It's, you know, the ceilings are cathedral and, you know, so it's really, really neat. And we've changed quite a bit of the interior. So it should, anybody who saw it before will be surprised. And now it's a lot nicer.
That's really exciting.
How does alcohol fit into this? Is this a business that is based around alcohol or is it based around fine dining with alcohol?
It's fine dining and honestly, you know, with restaurants, you just kind of have to have alcohol because it's just part of the, it's part of the scene. So if we could open a restaurant and it'd be successful without alcohol, then we probably would. But it's, that's, you know, we built a bar in here and definitely will have alcohol in a bar. But it's more geared toward the food.
And tell us, see, you're a wings company. But tell us about your experience with dealing with the liquor code and the dining establishments in Colorado.
Well, we didn't have a problem, but we had a liquor license over there. We never got a ticket or we never had any kind of problems. We just kind of, you know, followed the rules and it went pretty smoothly. You know, we never really, we never really used, we never really saw alcohol as a part of the income. It was kind of like, you know, we sold alcohol because, you know, people, you know, wanted to order it. They wanted to order beer when they had wings. And so it's pretty straightforward. I mean, they have rules and regulations and if you follow them, you don't get in trouble.
Have you participated in the alcohol server training program?
I have not, I have not personally. But generally, whoever we have as bartenders, they'll have somebody that's assigned. And they'll get us, they offer a certificate, you know, that kind of shows you how to store alcohol and how to serve it and how to tell who's, if somebody is too drunk to serve. And it kind of, we always have somebody that's kind of, you know, manager position over the bar.
Okay, I will predict that there will be a requirement by the end of this hearing by council that your servers, as well as management, all participate in a alcohol servers training class. And you can contact Lisa Del Piccolo, the clerk that you've been working with to do that.
Absolutely.
Only council can put that stipulation on you, but I have, I know them, let's just put it that way.
And I have naturally no problem with that. I prefer to have my, to people who are serving and have in charge that, you know, that they know what they're doing.
Okay, one of the things besides moral character which we've been addressing here is the designation of the neighborhood, which for our town has always been the city. Do you have any problems with designating your clientele as coming from throughout the city of Montrose?
No, I don't think I have a problem with that.
And one of the things we have to determine is if the citizens of Montrose want a establishment like yours serving liquor. One of the things that we sometimes look at to determine that is a petition. We received five today, a staff of petitions, 128 signatures. We haven't had a chance to look through everything other than city limits. There are 77 comments in favor from within the city limits. Beyond that, why do you think citizens in Montrose want you to have a liquor license?
Well, I think that the restaurant is going to be unique. It's going to have, it's going to be a lot, it's going to be a place where people can go get kind of, you know, really, really good food that's, you know, fresh and it's going to have a seasonal menu that'll change. And I think it will be a really positive place in the community.
And tell me about your outdoor seating. If I'm not mistaken, I've heard rumors that you put in a deck or patio?
Yes, and we kind of did that more because of COVID, you know. We want to build, offer outdoor seating. So we have a big, I think it's probably about 40 by 50 foot deck out there. And we're going to, but we're going to kind of put these big shade sails. It's going to cover the whole thing. So it'll be kind of almost like a pavilion out there where you can go and you can sit outside and eat outdoors instead of having to come inside.
In council from the staff's position, the application is order, is in order. And there would be nothing stopping a decision made by council at the end of this hearing or up to 30 days. So I'll turn it back over to mayor for you to open for a hearing, both for and against, and council comments.
Thank you very much. So I will open a liquor license hearing. Council, any questions or discussion for the applicant? Yes?
Mr. Green, I'm very concerned about underage drinking. And it sounds like you're going to have a wonderful restaurant where families will want to come in and mom and dad order a bottle of wine. And, you know, they have teenagers or college kids with them. And so I wonder what your server's procedure would be in that situation?
I don't really, I'd much prefer, you know, you know, I know a lot of parents will let their children, you know, have a glass of wine or a beer. I don't, I prefer that not to be the case at a restaurant setting, especially, you know, this kind of setting. So we're not going to allow that kind of thing here.
Okay, so you'll card everybody that looks under a certain age?
Absolutely, I mean, if you have, yeah, if there's, you know, the college-age kids or with parents, I mean, the servers need to watch out for, you know, that kind of thing. And unless they're 21 or older, they can't drink here.
Excellent, thank you.
Question I have, have you had any violations in the past?
No, not at all. We had zero violations with our past liquor license.
Are you going to have a separate bar area in this establishment or is it all just tables?
It's all kind of, you know, the inside of the church, the main level is, you know, the bar is there. But it's going to be, it's going to be kind of separated from the dining areas. So the upper level, where I guess traditionally where the original pastor used to speak, it's a little bit, you know, there's a couple steps up, so we call it the upper level. That'll be where the main dining area is. And then at the lower level, we have the bar area.
Is the kitchen still all the way down?
It is, the kitchen is in the basement. Which isn't ideal, but we're working with it.
When do you think it's going to open?
We would like to open here in the next week or two. I mean, depends on obviously how this meeting goes. And then we had, we have a little bit more construction to do. But the menu is ready to go and we have, we're fully staffed and everybody's starting to, you know, get really excited. And we had an employee kind of get together last week and everybody was really happy and everybody's excited, so.
Fantastic.
Great. Any other questions? Welcome to Montrose. We're excited to have you here and to have your business here. I will accept any comments from the public now concerning this liquor license. And this can be comments for or against, we'll entertain both at this moment.
I see none, Madam Mayor.
Doesn't look like there was anyone here to speak either in opposition or support. I believe I now, what was the hearing portion of the liquor license hearing? Is that correct, city attorney?
Correct.
And the hearing is closed and I would, can I take a motion?
I'll make a motion to consider approval of the new hotel restaurant liquor license at 647 East Main Street for Bonnie and Clyde's Limited, doing business as Bonnie and Clyde's for consumption on the licensed premise.
I'll second that.
Great, we have a motion and a second and we'll use our electronic voting system again. Okay, number nine, item number nine is Resolution 2020-18. Council consideration of this resolution set in October 6th, 2020 as the hearing date for the unwind addition to the annexation. I will turn it over to city senior planner Amy Sharp. Hi.
Hi, thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a brief presentation to share with you this evening on this one. I'm going to share my screen here first. Are you able to see that?
Yes. Big ol' hole. Okay.
All right, I'll start with just a brief overview of the annexation schedule. We had the work session overview on this project on August 17th. And then tonight is council consideration of the resolution to set a hearing date. On September 9th, we'll be holding the planning commission zoning hearing to provide a recommendation for the zoning of this parcel. And then on October 6th and 20th, we'll have the first and second reading of the annexation and zoning ordinance. So this parcel is a pretty skinny parcel. You'll kind of see the sliver, it's in orange and the black arrow points to it. It runs north and south and then just a little bit to the west. So the unringed addition is located west of South Townsend Avenue. And it's between Odell Road and Ogden Road for a point of reference. This map shows the project site outlined in yellow. So the parcel is approximately 0.87 acres in size. It is within the city's urban growth boundary, the city water and city service area. And it's actually surrounded by city property on all sides. The area just to the south of it was actually recently annexed as well too, since I last made these maps. So it's completely surrounded by city limits. So the zoning of the surrounding area is B2, which is highway commercial, B3, general commercial, and P public to the west. They will be requesting the B2 Highway Commercial District in the planning commission zoning hearing coming up. That district is intended to provide for business oriented, towards serving the motoring public. So the annexation of this property will actually clean up an orphaned strip of land that was not annexed into the city with the 2002 parent parcel, which is located directly to the east, the B2 parcel. And this orphaned strip was actually added by a court order to the parent parcel in 2008. And it's remained in the county since that time. So this is just kind of a cleanup of a parcel that's been remaining out in the county. This kind of gives an overview, a more detailed overview of what the parcel looks like. And due to the size and other factors, an annexation agreement is not needed for this parcel. So this one, again, this is pretty small to see because it's a really small slither, but the black arrow points to it. And it falls within both the general commercial, which is red, and the parks and open space in our future land use map of the comprehensive plan. So general commercial, that land district is meant for auto-oriented uses and then general retail goods and services. And then parks and open spaces, pretty self-explanatory. It's meant for parks, open space, and also conservation of the Uncompagated River Corridor. So our staff analysis, in the future annexation and zoning hearings, the staff will be recommending approval of this annexation and zoning because the area is urbanizing and it is surrounded by city limits. In summary, the annexation agreement is not required and the proposal is consistent with the public health, safety, and welfare annexation policies and the comprehensive plan. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any council questions or comments? Okay, I'll say, we did look at this at a work session two weeks ago. I think there was an opportunity then for comments and questions. I was not present, but I have been, I've read all the materials and feel sufficiently informed on this matter. I will now accept public comment. So is there anyone here who wishes to make public comment on this?
I see none, Madam Mayor.
Okay, great.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Amy? I asked this in the work session, but I'd like to just do it again for the benefit of the public. This parcel in no way will impede public access to the river itself. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Perfect, all right. I just wanted to get that out on the record, thank you.
That's important, thank you. Okay, so no further questions from council, then there was no public comment. So I think we can move forward with the question.
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve Resolution 2020-18.
I second, oh, sorry.
We have a second and we have a first and a second. And so we will use our voting system to vote on this item. Okay, the next item on tonight's agenda is item number 10. It's the center subdivision final plat. Council consideration of the center subdivision final plat. And again, I will turn it over to senior planner Amy Sharp.
Great, thank you. I'm going to share my screen for a short presentation on this one as well. A brief overview of this project. We had the city council work session overview of the project on August 17th. And then tonight is the hearing to approve or deny the final plat for the center subdivision. So this property is located out on East Oak Grove Road. As you can see from the orange parcel out here, it's pretty far out east. And then it has access to the parcel via the county road 6830 and also East Oak Grove. So the center subdivision final plat will actually subdivide Lot 2 of the Marbella Minor Subdivision, which consists of 12.8 acres into five new lots. These lots will range from 1.7 acres up to three acres. And there is an existing city force main sewer line that runs along the east and north lines of the property that each lot will be able to connect to. And there's also existing tri-county water out on East Oak Grove that each lot will tap into for water. The property is approximately 12.8 acres in size and it's currently zoned R1A large estate district. So the center subdivision preliminary plat, just for history, was actually approved by city council July 7th of this year. So it was just recently, the preliminary plat was just recently approved. In order to be approved for the final plat, these are the following conditions that have to be met. First, all lots must meet the minimum lot size, which is half an acre that's required in this zone, the R1A district, and it does. For the streets, all surrounding streets must be in place, inspected, and approved by the city engineer prior to final approval. And the improvements will receive a preliminary letter of infrastructure completion. That has also been completed. And as far the utilities go, all easements must be shown and the city sewer and other utilities must be installed and available to serve all lots finals prior to final approval. Those have also been done. This is a map of what the final plat looks like, for those of you interested. The Lot 1 already has an existing house on it and I will be adding four more lots. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much. Questions or comments from council, from Amy Sharp? Okay, I will, it's a public comment on this agenda item. If there's anyone who wishes to speak in favor or against.
I see no one at the time.
Anyone? In which case, again, let me just back up a second. We did talk about this in a work session and everyone's really familiar with that. Sometimes that's why it looks like we move through things quickly. This is the first time council has seen this information. Okay? Does someone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. Consider making a motion to approve of the center subdivision final plat, expressly conditional upon the city staff ensuring that all policies, regulations, ordinance, and municipal code provisions are met and that the app can adequately address all staff concerns prior to the execution of the final plat. The staff, city staff is not authorized by this approval to execute the final plat prior to all the conditions being satisfied.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion or questions? Seeing none, please use your electronic voting.
And we do lose sound on the feed downstairs. So if you could just repeat what you said when the votes were up there.
Sure, I said we have unanimous approval of the center subdivision final plat.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, so next is item 11. Business incentives for Chowdown Pet Supplies. This is council consideration of business incentive package totaling 100,000 for ink tank removal and a justice payment at the new Chowdown Pet Supplies location at 535 South First Street, which is an old Daily Press building. Funding will be provided from downtown tax increment finance funds. I will turn it over to the city's director of business innovation and tourism, Chelsea Rossi.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and good evening, everyone, from afar and virtually. So I'm really excited about the two presentations I have for you this evening. The first one being for Chowdown Pet Supplies, as you just said. The theme of both of these presentations and requests before you will be to leverage investment. So we're asking for council's approval and support of an investment in this business and also another program that we'll discuss later, to be able to leverage greater investment for improvements and beautification as well as prosperity in our community. So being the second time that we've been through this, I want to include enough information for those who may be the first time hearing it, but also not take up too much of your time. So if I'm going too fast or you'd like me to slow down, please just do not hesitate to interrupt. Chowdown Pet Supplies, which is a wonderful downtown business currently located on the western side of Main Street, the western side of Townsend on Main Street, is looking to relocate to expand their footprint. It's very important to them to stay in the downtown area. They really like being downtown and being part of that vibe. But they need more space and they need better parking. And so the proposed location is 535 South First Street, better known as the former Daily Press building. It's actually right next to Centennial Plaza. And you can see on the photo there, the public parking lot between Centennial And you can see on the photo there, the public parking lot between Centennial Plaza and the proposed location. So, the reasons for expansion, as I briefly mentioned, would be more accessibility to parking. If you've utilized Chowdown, you know, they have wonderful customer service and they're always carrying your pet food to the car. And so, they want to have great access to that parking because sometimes they're busy enough that they have hauled dog food all the way over near the post office. And so, it'll just have superior or better parking for superior customer service. Next, they're going to have new service offerings in this building. So, their business has grown so much that they are using every square foot of the space that they have. And they'd really like to be able to add more groomers, extend their puppy classes, do more home deliveries, especially with COVID. Things have really sped up in that area. And they'd also like to be able to provide doggy daycare. This, again, is a distinction between a dog kennel and dog daycare, which is just a daytime service for pet owners who may want to drop their dog off if they're in the area, just visiting to go to lunch or shop, or for working professionals who might need somewhere for their dog to go during the day. And then, of course, they want to expand their retail space and they believe that this will increase revenues in the business. So, why would we want to invest in this as a municipal government? So, it's really important, and as we all know, to have downtown be the heart of our community. And we have a very vibrant business in our downtown that wants to stay downtown. And so, this allows us to retain this business in that vicinity, provide, you know, foot traffic for other businesses. And again, just that vibrancy that we know Chowdown offers in our area. And then, of course, it also improves this building, which has been, you know, a little bit blighted, somewhat underutilized, and is really central to our new campus improvements that we're doing near City Hall. Additionally, this expansion should grow the business by eight to nine new jobs. So, there's currently a staff of 12. They're looking to get up to 20 or 21 people within coming years. And they project about an 18% increase in retail sales, but a 28% increase in overall revenue. So, that other revenue would be coming from the service side of the business. So, the building is going to need quite a bit of improvement. There's a lot of hazardous materials like asbestos. There's an ink tank inside and you know, if you're familiar with the building, how the external facade is a bit blighted. So, they are looking at spending over a million dollars on the acquisition of the property as well as the renovations to the inside. They'd like to add outdoor park space for walking dogs. They'd like to maybe add a mural, maybe add a garage door to the external part of the building. And so, all of this, of course, is going to add up. But in order to even begin occupying and utilizing some of the space, they're going to have to remove an ink tank that was left from the Montrose Daily Press when they occupied the building. There's going to be asbestos abatement. And so, those are the things that we feel would be prudent to invest in because if Chowdown were to pack up and leave town and we invested in this part of the building, then someone else could come into this business or to this building and operate a business a lot easier instead of having the building be vacant or underutilized as it is today. So, the request before you is less than 10% of the total product, project cost, $14,000 for the ink tank removal, and $86,000 toward the asbestos abatement. The asbestos abatement is more than $86,000, but we felt like we wanted to stay in line with what we typically incentivize on these type of projects. So, we kept it at the rate of 86 for a total of 100. And that concludes my presentation.
Is that building currently, has it been empty for a really long time? Because I, I don't, what's been in there, anything recently?
Yes, there is currently a gymnastics studio called Snow Shadow Gymnastics, and there's also been karate in the building. And so, they're utilizing a portion of the building, but not the entire building.
Okay.
Are they, are they going to stay there, Chelsea, or will they be relocating?
No, they, I believe, are going to be relocating. I do know that the building owners, as well as the real estate agent and us at the city, have said that we're willing to help and trying to find another location and facilitate that move so that it's a good one for both parties.
When it comes to parking, the best I recall, there is no parking on the South Park Avenue side. So, their parking is going to be either in front of the building or in the city parking lot.
So, there's parking across the street where the Hilltop office is. And then, there's parking on the south first side part of the building as well as parking actually on the property where the building sits. And then, the rest would be the public lot that city staff utilize. And so, during the day when city staff are on duty, that parking lot is likely to be full, especially with recent changes that are coming to the renovations of Civic Campus. But we still believe that there will be adequate parking for the business.
Yeah, that was one of my concerns because looking where they are now and the amount of traffic in there, I just was concerned there would be some kind of a shortage of parking in this area actually as far as the building itself and its grounds go. So, we're really pushing that parking off, off on the other areas. The other question I have deals with the asbestos abatement. Are they stripping the entire interior of this building that requires all that abatement? Or is, is some of that being saved or is sealed, it can be sealed without the removal aspect of it?
I was once given that information and I cannot remember in its entirety what the answer is. I can find that out. I do know that they've had it professionally tested and that they are having a lot of it removed, but there may be some sealing as well to keep costs down.
Is the ink tank considered a hazardous material or is it just a nuisance?
Yes, it's considered a hazard. And so, that space inside the building is not being utilized right now. And once it's removed, they'll be able to have that as a receiving area for shipments, which is something they don't currently have in their location.
Questions or comments?
I just have a concern. It seems like we're, we're taking on quite a burden. When I look at $100,000 for, for maintenance on this building, we've kind of focused in the past on Main Street, trying to assist and trying to keep that as a relevant area within our community. And this really isn't on Main Street. You really don't see it in Main Street. Do you have certain, with the spending that, that dollars on?
It definitely falls in our downtown core, though. I mean, when we look at older buildings that are lighted and underutilized, that, I mean, I don't, no offense to whoever owns the building, but it's kind of eye source. I mean, I think here's an opportunity to repurpose and make that a thriving piece of our downtown as opposed to what's currently there.
Well, you know, I would think that when this building is renovated, it's more valuable, it has more value, which helps the county as far as property tax. I think it could be a real economic generator. I mean, if you've ever been in Chowdown on Main Street, it's always busy. And the whole point is, they don't have much parking. If you want to use anything on Main Street there, it's tough to park. And they probably at least triple their parking. But I think the economic generator that this store could be, and again, we got a modern pop business in the downtown area. Y'all know I'm not one that likes business incentives very much, but this one really makes sense to me.
The property taxes is a good point. The city doesn't benefit from those.
The county does.
The school district does.
School, yes.
I mean, I certainly have building that's sitting there un, undervalued and underutilized isn't helping anybody.
It might debate that they're adding anything to their parking because if you look at the diagrams and the photos, their actual parking, they've only got like seven lots, the seven spots. The rest is all dependent on the city lot right next door.
I don't think they have any spots now. I mean, public parking's public parking. I mean, they don't own any parking now.
When, when it comes to the present time when they're receiving products from their distributor, the trucks are parking in the middle of the street down there. How do you anticipate them to receive materials now? Is that truck going to utilize the alley space? Or are they going to be tying up the center section of South First?
They are going to use the alley by and large, and then they can come in off park as well, depending on how they do the receiving. But they'll probably come in, pull in through the alley and get the rhythm down. We did discuss that. Also, Councilman Frank, to address your concern about the parking, there are actually a couple, maybe two or three spaces on premise of the property that would come along with the property. But also, it's great to note that in their current location, they're sharing these spaces with a lot of different businesses and people who use the downtown. And in this proposed location, they're just going to have to share those spaces with fewer people. And so, I think in order to retain them in, in the downtown core, even though it's not on Main Street, this is really the only option. Otherwise, they're going to have to start looking at other locations in town.
So, even though they're going to be relying on the parking lot to share with city staff and downtown parking, they're still going to end up with net gain parking spaces.
Right, and their busiest days are going to be the weekends and that will be when we're not utilizing the spaces.
That's one, that's one thing I was going to mention. And also, across the street is Hilltop, but everything past Hilltop's building coming toward our Civic Campus is city-owned property. And so, there's about 14 stalls available there plus the few across the street. So, it's about 17 stalls right in that area, not counting the lot itself.
Are there parking spots on South Park? Because I'm looking on the Assessor's website and there's a shadow on the photograph. And so, it's really hard for me to tell if there's, if there's diagonal parking there or not. Does anyone know?
There, there really isn't. That's all they are. Basic sidewalk and curbing across on that east side of the building.
Because the block next to it has diagonal parking there.
And that's a turn lane on park. So, there is no actual on-street parking in that location.
The other question I would have about them utilizing the center of that street for any truck parking when they were receiving supplies. With our police department being where it is, we have a lot of emergency vehicles needing to get out of there quickly at times. So, I'd like to make, make sure that we put a restriction in here that does not allow them to have delivery trucks setting in the middle of that street.
Just so we know, there will be no emergency vehicles using that stretch of the street because we're closing South First in its entirety from the parking lot headed west. And all the, all the public safety vehicles will be going out the back of the new facility toward the alley and out. So, they won't be coming out in the direction that you're just from.
Another part of clarification, I'd like to just kind of make sure people understand is where is the financing for this coming from? Is the tax increment financing that's already counted in place? And if you wouldn't mind, Bill giving us a little more of an in-depth explanation of where that money is coming from? It's not coming from public tax money, cars?
So, years ago, when the Downtown Development Authority was established by the city council, that also gave the city council the authority to create a tax increment financing district using the same boundaries as the DDA. And so, a couple of years later, the TIF was established. There was actually two TIFs in place, a sales tax TIF district and a property tax TIF district. The property tax TIF is, would be upside down today. And so, there was never any money generated from property values in the downtown. From the time the tax increment financing district was created to the time it was dissolved, the property values had never come back to where they were prior to the creation of the TIF. So, there was never any property tax money in there, but there was sales tax increment created, which means from the beginning of the tax increment financing district to the time we dissolved it, there was new sales tax revenues generated above the value of when it was created to the tune of about $800,000. So, we have a fund now that the Downtown Development Authority has been dissolved, that also dissolved the TIF district. But those monies didn't go away. They're sitting in an account, in a fund. And we all, as a city, decided we wanted to meet the original intent of that money, which was to keep it in our coffers until such time we had projects come up within the downtown district, not just Main Street, but the DDA, the old DDA district is what we usually refer to when we're talking about our downtown core. And it's to eliminate blight. It's to remediate aged properties. It's to help dilapidated buildings get refurbished. It's to eliminate hazards like asbestos, ink tanks, underground storage tanks, fuel tanks, all those kinds of things that, that Brownfields would normally take care of. If you have some of that, we've actually utilized the Brownfields program on this particular site for the Phase 1 type activity, which is studying the history of the site, identifying potential hazards. And then, it rolls into Phase 2 where they do a little more in-depth testing things. But then, the next step is the normal practice is the city would take over a piece of property, remediate, take away the hazard using Brownfields monies, and then give the property back to the owner or sell it to a new owner. And that way, the owner that was responsible for the contamination, sometimes they no longer exist. They just went away. Other times, they still exist, but they're worried about liabilities associated with the cleanup because, just because you have an estimate, you never really know what you're going to find. And so, there's a lot of things that come up with hazard mitigation. And so, it's a perfect use of TIF monies. That's, that's what TIF is designed to do. And in this particular case, not only is it a business expansion, an economic development project, dog creation, an expansion of an existing small business in our main core, it's also removing that hazard from the property. And so, you invest with the TIF to help. It's not the entire project. It's about 10% of the overall project. But if Chowdown were to ever go out of business and go away, this property is now marketable. It's been on the tax rolls at a higher value and there's no hazard there. So, if the potential of getting a new tenant or a new buyer in a quick turnaround time is much better than there has been in the past. Because it takes away that worry for the potential buyers. So, for a lot of reasons, it's a perfect project. Really excited about it. Another perfect project would be the KP building, which is not on Main Street either. It's on South First, just like this one. But still a major building in our downtown core, the old budget furniture building. And hopefully, we'll get a buyer someday and they can come back to city council and ask you to use some of our TIF fund for that as well.
I think that you bring up an excellent point there because we wait until a buyer has a use for a property. We can run around downtown and fix some of the blighted old buildings that are empty. But until a business says, you know, that's a building that I could see moving into, it doesn't really make sense to go around and remedying old buildings until someone comes along and says, that building would work well for my business. So, we aren't spending money in the hopes that a buyer in the future someday would find it attractive. We've waited till a buyer comes along and has a solid plan. And then, I really, I think sometimes people say, oh, you're, you're helping that business. But really, we're improving capital downtown and we're waiting until someone wants to use it before investing that money. And I think that's really smart.
The one other question I have, just for clarity, if there's an existing business in downtown our core area that has a hazard like asbestos or ink tanks or things like that, that they would like help getting mitigated, they can come to the city and still at any moment apply for the same kind of help we're giving to this business?
Definitely. In fact, we, for two cycles now, we've received $300,000 approximately from Brownfields from the EPA. So, we've gone through about $600,000, $600,000 or $700,000 in the last seven, eight years, doing just that around our downtown core, up and down the river corridor, the Main Street corridor, identifying hazards, helping people do the studies and Phase 1 and Phase 2s to help them with those types of projects.
Because I know that there's a lot of conversations about using this money, this TIF money, to improve our downtown. But there's this kind of this mindset that only new businesses coming in have an option to use that, and that's not the case. An existing building, an existing business, they have that same opportunity to come to the city and apply for this help.
Yeah, and in fact, the primary focus of our business model since 2011 has been the retention and expansion of our existing small businesses. Only recently have we delved into the world of business attraction, and that's since the establishment of the URA. And that's since the establishment of the URA and then partnering with the M E D C on some things. But most of our business development monies have been spent on retention and expansion of our small businesses.
Okay, so after we spend this a hundred thousand dollars, how much is left in the sales tax tip?
About, it'd be about seven hundred thousand left.
So we, we have seven hundred thousand dollars to do things like David's talking about.
So there's some other empty storefronts and buildings in that downtown area. If someone wanted to move into those but for the leaking ceiling or but for the unstable wall or something like that, they should come and talk to us.
Definitely. Yeah.
I like that.
If some other cities actually do what what the mayor was describing, bigger cities, they go and they buy properties with their TIF monies, redevelop them, and then sell them to private parties or lease out the premises and things like that.
That seems a little speculative.
We're a little more, we're a little more fiscal.
Yeah, that sounds a little bit odd.
I don't want to flip commercial properties.
We don't do that here.
Can you explain to us why a steel tank is considered hazardous?
Have you seen the power of the ink?
The ink?
Is this, is this an empty tank?
It's the, it's the stuff that was in the tank, and I don't know if it's empty or not. I really don't.
You just tap one.
So I just wanted to say that I like the fact we're not spending general funds for this effort. And I think that that's, you know, I appreciate you making that proposal, whoever, Chelsea or wherever that came from. It's a good fiscal action, I believe, and I support it for that reason.
Okay, we're using, we're utilizing the money for what it was originally intended for.
Yeah, and not taking funds from the general budget that we need for lots of other things.
Somebody looked at the building, and we know we've got asbestos problems. Was the tank itself identified as a hazardous problem? Has it been inspected per se?
Has been inspected in the past. I don't know the answer to that question. I haven't. I wasn't part of that.
She said it was identified as a hazard.
I don't know, Chelsea.
And I'm, I'm not a hundred percent sure on this. We'd have to look at the report. But I believe it was identified in part of the assessment as hazardous and has been barrier to other prospective buyers.
Are there any further questions from council or staff on this item? I'd like to have an opportunity for public comment. Do you see anyone in our Zoom? Anyone, so to speak?
I do not see anyone who wishes to speak.
Madam Mayor, I would make a motion to approve the Business Incentives Package totaling a hundred thousand dollars for ink tank removal and asbestos abatement at the new Chowdown Pet Supplies location at five three five South First Street with funding provided from the downtown tax increment finance funds.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second, so please vote. Good, audio background. Okay, so that motion passed unanimously. Item twelve, Dart Facade Program. Council consideration of funding for the Development and Revitalization Team twenty twenty-one facade grant program. Again, I turn it over to Director of Business Innovation and Tourism, Chelsea Ross.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor and fellow council members for your support on the previous item and for hearing this item tonight. So as Mayor Bynum reflected a bit in the previous discussion, it's really about the leveraging of these funds and not just investing money when there's not a partnership to really take that investment to the next level. And so the request before you is a facade grant program. And this again is intended to be a partnership with building owners or business owners to improve the vibrancy and historical value of our area. So we're going to talk a little bit about what the facade grant program looks like and how it will work. The program will give priority to projects that eliminate blight and make the greatest visual impact on the surrounding environment. So as a great example, the building we were just discussing, the improvements were on the inside. And so that particular request would not be eligible for this program. However, if the owners were to apply for external improvements like paint, murals, garage doors, and those type of things, it would be eligible for this program. And we really will pay attention to applications that have historical value in the property or applications with a building in a prime location or a very big community or social value. A great example of a community or social value also is with historical value would be the KP building that Bill just referred to, as well as the Potato Growers Building. That, those are great examples of some property that we would look at with priority. So, applications must be made by the property owner unless permission is granted in writing to the tenant by the owner. That way, we aren't out making improvements on a building without any, without permissions. And these grant-funded improvements are meant to be permanent and lasting in nature. And so we're not talking about planters or benches or those type of things, but more permanent improver improvement to the structure. So what about the award dollars and the required match? With the dart board, we really fleshed out this plan. We thought a lot about what it would take to do a facade upgrade, you know, how much investment would actually be impactful, all of those type of things. And we settled on a two thousand dollar minimum investment by the property owner and a twelve thousand five hundred dollar maximum. So that would allow twenty-five thousand dollars property max for five years. So if a property had two parcels, for instance, where Montrose Surf and Kayak is currently located, there are two parcels in that building. And so they would be eligible for up to twenty-five thousand dollars maximum in a five-year period. It is required that the owner provide a one dollar for dollar match for the grant. However, if the building is on our local registry or designated at the state or federal level, then we will reduce the required match to twenty-five cents to the dollar to further incentivize property and building owners to get that historic designation. The program will require work to begin within three months of the approval of the application. And they will have twelve months to complete the process. This is in hopes that they have their ducks in a row before coming to the board for this request. They're ready to go. They have their quotes and they have a plan. And that something is done that we can see progress within a reasonable amount of time. Again, just like every city incentive program, the grant payments will be made directly to the contractor performing the work, not to the building or business owners. And it's designed for buildings that are already constructed. This will not apply to something that's a new build. Of course, this is not just eligible within the downtown. This is a citywide program. But what else is eligible? So we're talking about awnings, murals, lighting, exterior features, things that eliminate blight, uncover historic features, remove nonhistoric features, repair brick, wood, masonry, and other external features, and then also provide windows, displays, and doors, especially windows and doors that are of historic feel and look. Things that are not eligible, non-permanent features, as we already discussed, improvements that you cannot see from the right of way unless these improvements are structural to make the facade function or be in better shape. And then we will not incentivize commercial signs, but the infrastructure for signs would be acceptable. So we discussed this a bit at the work session when we went through it, but the idea would be to budget fifty thousand dollars annually. This would be a competitive and first come, first served basis for the money. We would open it early enough in the year that businesses and building owners would have plenty of time to complete their project and be notified that their application was selected. So for twenty twenty-one, as we'll talk a little bit about next week, we looked at budgeting this out of, sorry, I lost my train of thought here. We have monies left over from the DDA Operations Fund. So can, this is separate money than the TIF that we just discussed. So there is enough money, more than fifty thousand dollars in that fund that we could use to immediately fund the twenty twenty-one program. Then in twenty twenty-two, we would budget ten thousand dollars out of retail sales enhancement and forty thousand dollars out of the general fund each year. We can also look at allocating a portion of the general fund surplus, and we can get into that more in future years or in more detailed budget discussions. And that is the conclusion of this presentation.
Thank you very much. Council, do you have any questions or comments, Ms. Rossky?
Yes.
Oh, I look this way first, sorry. So we'll go, I understand, and then we'll go, Councilman.
So I just wondered, will this then begin in January of twenty twenty-one if we approve it? Is that what you're suggesting?
Yes. So we will discuss the timing, but it'll be early twenty twenty-one that we would begin the program. We want to make sure it's timed, again, prior to construction season so that those projects can get complete as early as possible before contractors are overrun with work.
Okay, thanks.
Do you foresee a lifespan of this grant cycle? Is this going to be a two-year, three-year, ten-year type of a program?
I think that a lot will depend on the way that the city's budget looks. The success of the program, which I can tell you, I've had a lot of inquiries after we just discussed it at work session. So I know a lot of building owners are very interested in it. So I think it would leverage a lot of those different things and sort of depend on you and your preferences as far as what we budget for in coming years.
Any other questions or comments? Is there any public comment on the Dart Facade Program?
I see none.
Okay, thank you very much. So we could consider a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve fifty thousand dollars in funding for the Dart twenty twenty-one facade grant program as presented.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second, please vote. Break our audio back after the vote so I can let you know that that passed unanimously for the facade program. Item thirteen, Sunset Mesa Tank and Rooster Pond Station Project Contract Award. This is council consideration of the, of the award of construction and engineering support contracts totaling wow, four million seven hundred forty-six thousand one hundred and sixty-six dollars and seven cents for construction of the Sunset Mesa Water Tank and Pump Station Project. I turn it over to City Engineer Scott Harvey.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I think I promised Doug that if it was around five million, I'd wear a tie, but it's a pandemic and I got my mask in the way. So I apologize in advance to Doug that I did not wear a tie. I will share my screen just to show some of the graphics I'm looking at here for the public. So nothing's changed. Are you able to see the memo here?
Yes.
Great. So no major changes since we talked about at the work session, but I'll give a quick overview for anybody who's tuning in the first time. We do currently operate a water tank at the top of Sunset Mesa, just east of the Ballfields. Tank is about sixty years old, has, was built for a much smaller town at the time. And is structurally compromised and experiencing operational issues, mostly coming from, you know, how it's hydraulically submerged on the system. To stay ahead of future growth and demands and maintain resiliency of the system, the water master plan identifies the need for two standpipe tanks up on the hogback just north of this tank, as you can see in this figure here. Those forces help stabilize pressures, gives us better resiliency against should there be a break in one of the feeder lines that go across the river. And then helps maintain pressures and fire flow as development occurs on the, for current development and as future development occurs on the western side of the river. We went through an alternatives evaluation, selected the style of tank as the most economical over the last year and a half through several past meetings. And then finished the design, put it out to bid this year. We received five bids. The lowest bid was from Ridge Valley Enterprises out of Montrose at four point three million. And as you mentioned, we're also have a four hundred thousand dollar or four hundred nine thousand dollar construction support contract that would be on a T and M as needed basis for some of the specialized inspections required to perform, such as structural welding, coating, some of the geotechnical elements. Getting all of those right on something like this, you know, these tanks are intended to go into service and stay in service for a fifty or twenty year, at least twenty year cycles. Design life is, is fifty years plus. But there, it's, it's a pretty big deal to take them out of service once they're put into service. So we want to make sure that there aren't any issues with the construction. The project would start construction this month if approved. The construction will take about a year. It's a pretty complex pump station, as you can see from the rendering here. That's all an interior pump structure that goes with the tank to accommodate all the various water operational scenarios we have. And then be put into service about a year from now, September twenty twenty-one. And here's a picture of the tank also scrolling. It's a thirty, it's like thirty-five foot diameter, a hundred and thirty foot tall. Standpipe essentially would be painted light or dark white, kind of tannish color. All the project will be managed by the city Montrose Engineering Department with support from a design engineer. Some of the more specialized work, which was Farnsworth Group, they were procured through a competitive process several years back. We had one point, knowing this product was going to span multiple years, we budgeted one and a half million this year, so I'm just about right with the expected burn rate. And then the balance, three point two five million is being proposed for the twenty twenty-one budget. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
If you say that last part again, you cut out, I think that was really important. How much, how much is budgeted in which years? Can you just repeat that part?
Yep. Yeah, sorry. My computer fan just kicked on and it always does that right when I'm talking budget, it seems like. So yeah, we budgeted, we knew this project was going to span two years, given its scale. Budgeted one and a half million for twenty twenty out of the water fund. And that'll hit just about right with the expected burn rate. So the project, the three point two five million is being proposed in the twenty twenty-one budget. And all of this is a hundred percent out of the water capital fund, so it's all enterprise fund funding.
Okay.
Can you explain to the public what burn rate is?
But yeah, so, you know, because our budgets operate on calendar years. When we have multiple year projects, it's sometimes hard to tell exactly how those will split years. And so we try and budget each year to kind of hit where that contractor is going to use up that money and and make progress. So on construction projects, we set them up to pay for the actual objects and what we get. You know, we don't pay for or T and M or anything sitting around. So, you know, depending on how fast they implement is how fast the bills come in, depends on what calendar year it hits as far as the bills go. And then, you know, a lot of that'll depend, a lot of those elements are sometimes out of our control, too. We'll give a go on the construction contract. But if they, depending on, you know, if they're coming out from other jobs and and they want to do most of their construction towards the end of that window, you know, that can change when those dollars hit our payment or when we make the payments and when those dollars hit our budgets.
How quickly did they burn through the money?
Exactly. Yep. Long, long way of saying that, yes.
And enterprise fund is because we, the city, the water enterprise fund is operated, is separate from the city's general fund. When the water customers of the city pay their water fees, that money goes into the water enterprise fund, and then that money is used for water infrastructure in the city. So it's like its own business line within the city operations and general tax dollars are not spent on this project. This comes from water.
Correct. Both, both water fees and when, when new development occurs, it pays into a capacity fee, which is meant to expand the capacity of the system, which is, is exactly what this is doing. So those in aggregate are what the project.
And so when we look at the, the, all the different funds in the city, and we see that the balance of the water fund has crept up and crept up and crept up, it's in anticipation of this kind of project that's needed for resiliency and expansion of our city water system. So it's, I mean, it's a lot of money, but it's, I mean, we've been planning this for years. We have the money in the fund. This is the way it's supposed to work. This isn't an emergency. This isn't unplanned.
Exactly, yep, yep. And we, we, yeah, we run our capital, you know, the, the ma, the water master plan runs out about 15 to 20 years. Um, and we look at when we, when these products are going to hit and make sure we kind of throttle our reserves and, and all of that accordingly so that we're um, paying fees as we go.
So, we're not borrowing money to do it and then paying it off, we're saving up for it?
Correct.
Great, I think that's important information. Um, any other questions or concerns?
So, Scott, I'm curious, where's the pump station you're drawing? Doesn't, is it underneath the tank, beside it?
Um, so, yeah, immediately north of the tank. So, long term, we're setting this up to be modular. So, long term, as development continues through town, ultimately, we will need two of these tanks up there, um, that will be side by side, running east and west of each other. Uh, right now, we're building the uh, eastern one and the pump station goes in between them. So, about where that dot is on your thing is about where the pump station will be and then it'll have a tank either side of it. Just the one for now. So, now the tank and the pump station and the, the second one will be quite a bit cheaper because it'll all just plug into all of this existing infrastructure um, as, as it needs to expand. And that'll probably be about 15 years down the road, um, based on the models.
Wow, okay, thanks.
Really interesting, thank you. Any further questions, comments, concerns? Is there any public comment?
I see none.
Okay, then someone can make a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move to award a construction contract to Ridge Valley Enterprises in the amount of $4,336,876.07 and an insurance support contract to Farmers Group in the amount of uh, $409,290 for the Sunset Mesa Tank and Booster Pump Station Project as presented. Did you list those? Formerly at $338,876.07.
Okay, we have a motion?
I'll, I'll second it.
We have a second? Please vote. Okay, that motion passed unanimously. Moving on to item 14, Public Safety Complex Construction Project Architectural and Engineering Design Services Contract. Council consideration of a contract with Blythe Group and Co. for design and engineering services for all phases of the new public safety complex construction project for the proposed lump sum contract amount of $764,198 plus reimbursable expenses not to exceed $19,870. I will turn it over to City Public Works Manager Jim Shag for more information.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
All right, so yeah, as I said, this is for our uh, design team uh, for the new uh, police department project, which we've been calling the Public Safety Complex. And that's located uh, right next to the existing police department. Um, so we've been working for the last several months in building a team to build this and we've, um, we've hired several consultants, um, this one kind of being the last major piece to that puzzle. Um, we started off with a uh, technical advisor that was NWL. Um, we hired dynamic project management as our owner's rep, uh, Shaw Construction, um, and then most recently, this one is for Blythe um, group and that's for the design team. Um, so we, we've hired all these consultants in, in preparing to um, start this design. We've, we've had some uh, progress in the conceptual design with NWL and we are ready to hand off that conceptual design to um, to Blythe and, and start moving forward. So, um, we're bringing before you this, this contract for uh, for approval. And um, nothing has changed on this since we discussed it at work session, but I can go over a few um, points that, of why we selected Blythe and, and why we think they'll be a good fit for our team. So, they are uh, out of Grand Junction, um, and they have partnered with a uh, local architect, Motley Architecture, he's out of Montrose. Um, but then they've compiled most of their team from our area as well, it is from Grand Junction or out of Montrose, um, such as Delmont, um, engineering, we, we do a lot of work with them and they're obviously from here in Montrose. Uh, Lindauer Dunn, a structural engineer that are at Grand Junction, uh, Big Horn Engineering under Grand Junction, um, and Julie Wolverton uh, right here in Montrose on landscape design. Um, so, uh, we think they'd be a, a great fit into our team and kind of that last big puzzle piece, as I said. Um, so with that, I, I'm recommending and awarding a contract to Blythe Group um, for $764,198 plus the um, $19,870 in um, reimbursables. Now, with that, I would take any questions or if any of that you'd like me to go any further, I would be happy to.
Great, thank you. Any um, council comments or questions for Mr. Shag?
Yes, for clarification on page 64 of the document packet. It, it doesn't, it shows us a general F, F and E coordination. Could you explain for the public what F, F and E is?
Uh, yeah, it's uh, furnitures, fixtures and equipment. So, it's, it's all the things that go in the building. Um, usually that's done through a, a separate consultant and um, in this case, uh, Blythe Group will hire a um, a sub consultant to manage that and it's um, the, the small pieces that go into the building. So, it's, it's not necessarily the design of the building, but it's the um, the furniture fixtures, that's, that sort of thing.
Was it a turnkey operation then?
Right.
I think it's fair to bring up to, we discussed this on several occasions in another meetings, work sessions and another council meeting, so it's, we're not just passing it along without knowledge.
Yeah, I think a lot of work and a lot of analysis went into studying the various companies that could have done this and finally selecting Blythe. So, I think your department's done a lot of work and the consultants that you fired previously.
Yep, yeah, thank you. And, and there were, there were 15 uh, qualifications that were submitted for this, which is a, a very good pool to have and uh, very impressive um, packages. I think there were many that were, were very well qualified and um, it was a tough decision, honestly, um, but we um, I think we're all confident in the one we've chosen.
Great, thank you. Any other comments? Uh, is there any public comment that you can see at our Zoom?
I do not, Madam Mayor.
Great, then um, I could propose someone make a motion.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to award an architectural and engineering design service contract to Blythe Group and Company for the proposed lump sum contract amount of $764,198 plus reimbursable expenses not to exceed $19,870 as presented.
Oh, seven.
Great, we have a motion and a second, please vote. Great, that passed unanimously. Um, that's the end of our business like um, voting item, so we'll move on to staff reports and um, public information report and I will ask City Manager Bill Bell to give us an update on anything.
Uh, just want to remind everyone that it's budget season and uh, we encourage public participation in the budget process. So, we just uh, finish that up in our council budget, which will be on September 10th. And then shortly thereafter, we will have a public open house and uh, encourage citizens to come and ask questions or zoom in and ask questions. COVID going on. Uh, but we encourage anyone, we'll have everything on the website, access to the entire budget. And so, if anybody asks questions about what we're looking at for 2021, uh, after we present it to City Council, we'd be happy to sit down with anyone from the community and talk about those things. Sometimes it's a daunting thing to look at a city budget being using even to those of us who are used to looking at it. So, um, for the layperson, it can be really an intimidating document. Shaney and I love that stuff, so uh, please encourage anyone you see up in the community if they're talking about budget and why we do the things we do, having come in and talked to us.
So, your plan at the moment would be to do that budget open house on Zoom? Cause I think that might make it really accessible. In the past, um, attendance hasn't been particularly high. I don't know, people don't want to give up their evening hours to sit here in this room and listen, but they might find it easier to listen in while they prepare dinner from home or something. So, I think that will be interesting to see if we get more turnout.
Yeah, I'm excited to see and hopeful that we get more turnout because as you mentioned, we usually get a couple members of the public and then all the department heads and council members here talking to each other. So, uh, it would be great to have a good turnout.
No, I think having it online might make it more accessible, we'll see. Any other things going on that?
I don't have anything. It's uh, been a busy two days. We're just really excited. I mentioned at the work session yesterday, all the development that's coming forward in our community and it's really busy time in Montrose, it's really exciting time. But, but we're also making some important decisions for our community, really big decisions. And so, uh, just encourage anyone who has questions about those decisions or differences of opinion, come talk to us or let us know. Don't just write things or in social media and never call us and ask about it because we, we would love to sit down and talk.
Um, are there any other staff, city department heads or anyone that needed to update us on anything? They're not listed specifically in the agenda, but there's always an opportunity if there are any.
I don't see anyone requesting to speak.
Okay, then I will turn it over to City Council who um, who might, anyone on council who might want to chime in with anything that's on their mind.
Can I go?
You may.
Okay, so I just, um, I think tonight is a perfect example. Our agenda is full of work that has taken a lot of time and effort of staff. And so much is being done by the city right now. I'm really, I'm really proud to sit here and pass, you know, things uh, in a couple hours that I know took months of work in spite of a pandemic. So, I want to commend all of staff and just say, you know, great job and I'm just so proud of all the work that's being done by the city right now. We're not slowing down at all and uh, I think it's really wonderful.
I, I'd just like to comment, we had a ribbon cutting on the trail system along the river and it was interesting being down there, watching the amount of traffic going by. And we had two people who were down there with kayaks from Delta and complimented us on what a great facility we had down there. And I thought that was great.
Well, in addition to the ribbon cutting, it's, it has been a very busy two days for council. We had our work session yesterday and we got a great report from the Montrose Community Foundation about all the good work and all the grants that they've given out. And um, they thanked us for the city's partnership in that program. And I think I can speak on behalf of council that we're honored to be able to um, help the community foundation and um, be a partner for them and the good work they're doing in our community. We had a presentation by the State of Colorado Liquor Enforcement Division, which told us about how the state approaches liquor licensing and how they're a partner on that and how they do enforcement on liquor licensing. That was really educational. We had a ribbon cutting. We had a professional development session yesterday afternoon. Kevin Ballmer, the Executive Director of Colorado Municipal League came over from Denver in person to sit with us, a small group, and talk about council rules and responsibilities. Um, and that was really educational as well. So, then today, we had a Montrose Urban Renewal Authority Board Meeting. And so, it, it has been a busy day, um, throw in some COVID meetings that I attended and um, and an executive session that lasted almost two hours prior to our city council meeting. So, I want to thank, you thank the city staff for their hard work, but I want to thank my fellow counselors for their, uh, their hard work and their participation.
And we, we didn't go to sleep, no, one time.
Not one time.
And we have no coffee.
And, and we have, because of COVID, our, yeah, we don't have, we don't share coffee anymore. So, we, you know, you know, we're managing to do all this on our just internal energy. Uh, but it's, it's a lot of fun, it's really interesting and I want to thank my fellow counselors for, for showing up, for engaging and participating in all of that great work we've done over the last two days. And with that, I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
Madam Mayor, I move to adjourn.
So.